It is hard to see. It's what I always watch you.
Called this regular meeting of city council to order here at city hall, May eighteenth, twenty twenty one. Have an addition to the agenda, an executive session, non-elected personnel regarding pool. Are there any other additions to the agenda this evening?
I can get one ten minute just to brief council on some stuff tonight, please.
How long Alan?
Just ten minutes.
What's the exception, the not elected?
Yeah, not elected, yeah, or, yeah.
For an employee?
No, not an employee.
How long is yours Mark?
The thirty class?
Excuse me? How long is yours?
Ten minutes of story.
Yeah, that would be great, that actually that'd be perfect, thank you, yes. So, attorney, why, it was in that, that'd be good.
Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Motion.
Clear. I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, can I add something? We, I had an issue come up, we, here in Thursday about a dangerous dog, I need the council to consider appointing assistant city attorney on an interim basis to handle that hearing if it happens.
You can just put that under you?
Yeah.
I guess I'd make a motion to approve the additions to the agenda. If any change. Well, well, your head of.
The other one needs to follow, makes nobody, I guess you need to see who votes for the last one, because he already seconded it, so.
Have you already made the motion?
Yeah, he made the motion.
Vote on that one then we'll.
Okay, alright, all in favor for the first additions, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, yeah, you're making the motion for that one, and who seconded that, the second motion for John's.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, is there any citizens comments this evening? Okay, consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, May fourth, twenty twenty one. We have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, zero five, one eight, twenty twenty one, excuse me, twenty twenty one, in the amount of thirty seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and sixty two cents, and petty cash, in the amount of one hundred and seventy one dollars and eighty six cents. I have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department heads, electrical department, Jeff.
Well, if you came around the east side of the building, you could see the first one. I, we had an outrigger down on a truck that I did not see when I went to pull it back in, you know, we always pay attention and pull them up, but we'd finished the deal out at the fire station, and I, you know, whether we were in a hurry or what happened, it didn't get pulled up, and those doors are narrow, and I'm the guy that caught it, I caught it with an outrigger and took the pier out of it, so, um, we're gonna get some estimates on it, and see about whether, uh, it's less expensive to put a wide door in there for both holes, or whether we wanna put those doors back separately, because the one on the bucket truck is really narrow, we've got about four or five inches on the mirrors when we pull it in, so, anyway, we'll get some prices together on that, and we'll meet back with you and tell you what we found out, so, um, we got the wire down in the country, we're ready to pull poles, all except for one last span next to town, we got a little insulator work to do in the morning time down, and then it'll be ready to pull everything out, clean it up, and it'll be done. I, I bought a breaker box to put at the wellhouse, so we can protect that motor down there when we turn it on, there's, and the breaker boxes burn up anyway from the heater, and we're gonna have to have heat back in there, one way or the other, so we just went ahead and bought a panel, put it in there, we'll get the through phase run out there, and, um, set it up, because eventually we'll have to have a meter on it anyway, so we'll just do it before we, and we've still got to contact our stuff to see if we can make it work, so hopefully in the next few days, while we get that in, and then we'll be ready to test it well, so, uh, I think the guys are getting close to putting the door in on the south wall, I have not heard any more on the engine, as far as what happened after the radiator incident and that stuff, or whether ready to move it down, Cliff was gonna let me know, and I haven't heard anything, so, other than that, just regular daily stuff, we've been helping Jason a little bit, get the fire station stuff done, and some of that, so, that's where we're at.
Anybody got any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff?
That well was out of hold last time in ninety eight, is that what that big works at?
It was out in ninety eight, and I think David told me he thought it was shut down in nine or ten, so it's been set ten years anyway, as long as the shaft's not froze up, you know, there's a good chance we can pump it. Jason bought a forty-five to put on there, so we can shoot it out the door, so we don't have to pick it up and reset it or any of that, so we'll just give it a shot and see, so.
And it was acidized in ninety eight too, I think when it came out, if it acts funny, it probably doesn't need to be acidized again, probably.
Probably, I'm sure it is, because I'm sure the screen's not perfectly lined, and so, but, we'll try and get it put together, see what happens from there, so, that'll kinda give you an idea of where you wanna go after that, so.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Moving on, water department, Jason.
Well, on that note, on well two, I sat there and took the, uh, water meter out, and also took the check out, I sat there and seen Ryan going down the street, I stopped him, show him, and the bolts on top of that check is just not gone, there's no bolt, you can't even tell it's a bolt that's not left, that stuff, so, to let that, say on that, I'm not for sure what we wanna do, I could try to mess with it, but I just got a feeling it's not gonna work, and the flapper on it, it's so hard, I had to sit there and just hit it down with a shovel, I tore it up with a hammer handle and it went down, and then I pulled the meter, and when I pulled the meter, I took it out the raindrop, the lady out there took some pictures, meanwhile laughing at me looking at it, because it's so old, and so she took pictures, sent it off, and, uh, she called me back about two hours later, and sat there and says, well, I called the gentleman, he said they're outstanding meters, but if it gets to that point as old as it is, and to get it calibrated, you might as well just look and get another one, so there's that, and so I just sat there and says, well, we'll go from there, and then let's discuss it down the road, what you guys wanna do. When she called me, she sat there and said that the new meter is around twenty-two hundred, and then they're also, the gentleman's looking at putting a transmitter on there to run from the, from that meter, to run to the VFD, and to more give it the, to give it to, uh, more terms on that, because I asked for sure what it did, and she said the VFD does the work, but that transmitter from the meter tells it how to do the work, and she said that that gentleman sat there is really a push of those, because it really makes it more efficient of how to run that truck, so I'm just throwing that out there as well, and then, uh, of course, like you said, we got, we got the fire plug installed, we will get the dirt out there, we're trying to get that mud to dry up, so it doesn't make a mess there, and we'll get that picked up pretty quick, and of course, the pool's done, he called me, and said, Karen, said he can fill it flat, the last of this week or the first of next, and then, uh, let's see, I think that's it for the water, and on the sewer, I just wanted to bring up the, about the, I don't know if you guys heard, but the back truck went down, it's been down for a while, and been trying to baby it, but it's finally went down, and we got the gentleman, we got the gentleman to come here from, uh, what's his name, remember he?
Key equipment.
Yeah, Key Equipment, and he sat there and looked at it, looked at it, meanwhile, we had put two valves in the side of it, didn't help, so he sat there and got it, called it, called people, and told them what was wrong with it, and it looked like the pump's out, so he got back with us, Jeff, and everybody had sat there and said, a new pump for that to, to take it in, take it off, take it to Kansas City, get it done, it's gonna be around fifteen tons, he said that's high ball, so I just, I wanna know what you guys wanna do about that, if you wanna get the pump going, if not, the only thing we're gonna be able to do with that truck is just back, there won't be no washing, no nothing, no paint service with it, and it's gone, we had tried after we put the new ones in, I got in there, started up, and revved it up, and it shocked two of the, the bolts out of the pump, out of it, because it pressured up so much, it wasn't working the valve, so they probably had to heal the coil, or fill it in.
He said they would, he said they replaced it. The piston, that piston pump, half of it is water and half of it's hydraulic, so that's what works back and forth, and he said that, he thinks that the piston has come loose inside of that pump is what's done, so, but the truck's nineteen eighty-five, I mean, it's got a lot of age on it, so.
You can still suck with it, you just can't.
We could just back it, yeah.
Yeah, we can't put it anymore.
We can't use it, the good thing about that is, what we liked using it for most of all, too, was when we, we're close to lines, telephone lines, gas lines, we could take that and pack that out, and get around it, find that stuff before we go, and that's one of my big issues of pushing that forward, and then use it also in case the trailer goes down again or something, we have a backup.
How's everything else mechanically on the truck, transmission, motor, brakes and stuff?
Everything's good, we got a little seal problem, and then the other, seal problem's leaking out of the seal a little bit on the back driver's side tire, but the other problem we gotta fix, and we're gonna do that during the winter time, is the hose, the vac hose that comes down, you know, comes out of the top and goes down to the hole, that extension on that is leaking oil pretty bad, so we try not to use it, if I do, I just leave it right where it is, because it'll soak the whole, it'll matter.
The cylinder's encased, where it's sliding in and out, it's inside a box.
And it's gonna be fun taking it off.
We're gonna have to take a bigger truck to pick it up to slide it apart.
That could be a good winter project, and we don't have to worry about that right now, we could do that ourselves.
Motor transmission, I mean, I'm just, was it the truck like sixty thousand or something?
New trucks, five hundred thousand.
No.
They've got a used one, they might sell us for a hundred and thirty when they get done with it.
Is that BTO driven, that pump?
It's air shift, yeah, it's BTO.
The motor's good, I mean, runs good, vac's good, the little motor in the back's good, they could use a tune-up on the carburetor probably, because they're gonna have to have it choked just for about fifteen minutes until it warms up.
Well, it'll suck mud, it'll suck.
Yeah, we could lose a hat in there pretty easy.
And that's haul at Kansas City?
They're gonna go get the bomb, take it down, take it up there, haul truck here.
And they won't exceed fifteen, you said?
That's what he said, he said it's high ball, yeah.
The piston's big, it's probably yea big around, about this long, sits up underneath the truck, so we figured we could get a big floor jack under there, we could get it in where we could get under it, we can pick it up and slide it out there and load it with our bigger truck, and then he'll take it to Kansas City, rebuild it, and bring it back. He said he'd stay there while they rebuild it, he said, I'm not gonna take it and leave it two weeks, he said, we're gonna take it in, tear it down, put it back together, bring it out, and it's a matter of two or three days.
It's been a good truck, five or six years, isn't it? Goes right before I got in council, I think.
Yeah, that pump really hasn't been a perfect thing, but you're supposed to be able to just sit there and kick that switch on, and that idle, and shoot a pretty good stream, and we'd have to rev it up, and then, but this last time I did it, I mean, their truck fucked, and it shocked those two right out of there, so we thought that was, that's it.
All relative to the cost of the machine, it's really not, I mean, it's kinda far from the course on some of that stuff, I don't, seems like a lot of money, but it's not in the big scheme of things necessarily.
I just soon have a functioning truck all the way around, rather than just working.
The reason I got it out to get it going is, I was gonna sit there and back those tree stumps out there, so I could maybe cut, find all those things, and find our water lines, and not cut the water lines, but cut the roots, but maybe it worked out that way.
I'm okay with getting it fixed, I'd rather see it fixed now than waiting, it needs fixed.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, yeah. Need a motion?
What, what was that, Key Equipment?
Yeah. I'm making a motion to have Key Equipment, uh, remove and repair the pump on the back truck for fifteen thousand dollars or less.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
And the other thing on sewer, I didn't know if you guys got this, I think Jamie put that in there, you didn't, okay, what this is, is remember the other spare pump for the fifth, Fifth Street Station, lift station, well, he says apologies for slipping through the cracks, or, and blah, 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 and the pump, he said the grinder pump is needing the new cord, needing this, that, and the other, and the main thing he said there, it says, uh, full rebuild, new cable and repair cost is substantial in comparison to a new unit, new unit is available, and also available quicker, and the price they have on that one, as of May sixth, was thirty-six ninety-four, and so I just wondered if you guys wanted a spare pump, that's what we needed, that's what I was wanting to see, if it's okay or not.
Three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars?
Three, yeah, three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars.
We took our old pump in there, tried to get it fixed, and it's just as, it's more expensive than.
So we've got two in there now, right?
Yeah.
Because this, we'd sent one of them for.
Yeah.
Just to be rebuilt first.
Yeah, we had to buy that, we had to buy one of them, and then, so that's what it was on that.
We upsized those pumps, when that was first in there, they were really small, and then when the groceries drove away, then we put bigger pumps in.
Yeah, and then this little, this one's still, the little one, and so they're gonna bump it up to that bigger one, like we got, sort of match all three.
Would it replace the one out Cherry Lane?
No.
No, totally different.
That's a complete difference.
Those are above ground.
These are. They're on a vacuum.
Yeah, right, that's right.
We wished it would.
Yeah.
Making it a whole lot easier.
Pretty cheap insurance, I think.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion for it?
I'd make a motion to spend thirty-six hundred and ninety-four dollars on a spare sewer lift pump, so.
I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Okay, um, we have someone here from Meyer.
Yes.
Austin, is it?
Austin, partial motion.
So, what do you have for us?
Well, I was called, and I believe you guys have some question on material, or installation, or just general all around, or what were some of you guys' concerns?
What are we getting for the money? What, what is it?
Uh, this, I had brought it, you can pass this around, the note form is actually, it's a, I apologize, I will print it out, seven.
That's okay.
Um, the note form is, it's a PVC liner, the best way to explain it is, it's exactly the same as like stick PVC, but when they're on the extruder, instead of cutting it at stick length, they pull it through a machine that actually flattens it, and they pull it onto a coil, and then we come in, and we'll steam it, and pull it through the line, cut it, and then it gets steamed again, so it's soft, and then we'll put air pressure to it, and it expands it out, so I mean, it's the same material as like, if you were to open, cut, and dig, and install a new PVC pipe, it's the same, except for you're gonna have a jointless PVC pipe from manhole to manhole, and then after the installation, we'll go back in and robotically cut in all the services that are there, the ones that are there but factory cap, we, it'll be up to you guys, but we probably won't reinstate those, because that's just another point for infiltration to come into system, but, I don't know, do you have?
So that, that's gonna just fit to the diameter of the line?
Yes, yeah, because as far as, it's the same material and the process, as far as making it is the same, but it's actually extruded to a different outside diameter than like, if you were to get a eight-inch stick pipe.
Right.
This outside diameter is the inside diameter of like an eight, eight-inch clay pipe, and it will, if you look at this, if you measure this, we're at about nine right now, it will expand out to form a, a close-fit liner to whatever the existing pipe is, but there's a, there's a small range, we can't expand it from like an eight to a twelve, there's not that much expansion.
Right.
So.
That's the product there, I mean, it looks just like, that's the product, I mean.
Yeah.
It looks just like PVC.
No, no, it is PVC, it's, it's the same formula as like the normal.
You basically put it in hot though, right?
Yeah, we, we, it'll come in on, I think it's page.
Yeah, four, or.
Yeah, it, it comes in on all coil up, and then we steam it, and you have to get it to a certain skin temperature, and then once it's soft enough, I mean, it's, it's pliable, and then you have to pull it through, and then you have to let it relax and set, and then you'll cut it to length, and then you'll insert steam plugs on each end, and then you start applying steam again, and then you kinda increase the temperature and the pressure to slowly get that expansion, you get a tight fit, and, I mean, the pressures and temperatures are a big deal, but one of the biggest deals is, at the end of the manhole, you'll see it start to bell, and that's where you get your mechanical lock, and you know you're fully expanded, and then once we have full expansion, we cut the steam, and we start just putting normal air pressure to it, and that cools it, and we hold the air pressure on it while cooling it until we get below a hundred degrees, and then it can't fall out, it retains, I mean, as you can see, it retains its shape, I mean, you can stand on it, so, but it, it, I mean, it is PVC pipe.
It's pretty.
That is not at all what I was expecting.
Yeah. It's pretty good at staying that thickness through the hole?
Yes, yeah, and one, some of the big benefits of this over, because this, and then CIPB are the two major ones on the market, the, the big deal with this is, this is all factory tested, as far as when they do a batch run, and, you know, their coil, because when you get a job all put through, okay, I have these lines, this manhole to this manhole, and they will extrude it, and on the outside of the coil, it will say manhole number this to this, so you know exactly which one you're putting it into, but during that batch run, that same piece of pipe that's coming off, they cut sections off of it, and they do factory tests, just like brand-new PVC pipes, you know your test rates and everything else, prior to even putting it into the ground, where like traditional CIPB, it gets wetted out and pulled in and blown out, and then steamed out, but usually they have to cut like a cookie, and then send it off, and you don't know your act, you know, you have a good ballpark of your, your test rates, but you don't know what goes into the ground until you get it back and it's already cured in the ground, so.
And I'm assuming that they, when they do the, your quality does testing, they pretty much go to the extreme of what they're doing?
Yes, yeah, well, they go to the extreme, but they also make sure that it meets every strength that, when we advertise, we give a spec sheet of, yes, it can handle this much tension, the modulus.
Right.
They, they test it to make sure it at least, it at least meets it, if not surpasses it.
Okay.
And they're also third-party certified, as far as, it's not just them in-house testing it, now, not every single batch gets third-party, but all their numbers that they state, they're third-party certified from an outside test house to say, yes, the numbers they're claiming, we have gotten those or more, so they're good.
Okay, excellent.
I would assume that if we've got like a busted pipe, quarter and a half, that once you put this through, it's gonna bring everything back, I mean.
To, to an extent, it's, um, I mean, it's not, if, if you've got a collapsed pipe, it's not gonna push it back straight and around, that would be either like an open-cut point repair, or sometimes depending on if the, if there's a void outside, if you can TV it, and you can see that there's an existing void, sometimes you can go in with an internal, um, sectional point repair, and we put a packer in there, and we'll put it in, air it up, let it cure, and that, if there is a void, it can air it back up, and then that will hold, and then we can line through that, but if there's no void, there's a lot of soil pressure to try and overcome, because when I say we put pressure to it to expand it out, I mean, we're probably talking eight PSI, so it's, it's not a ton of pressure.
We do have some secret issues like that.
Well, and I mean, you guys camera everything, so I mean, you kinda know, I mean, but this is gonna take care of our big problems.
Yes, yes, yeah, that, I mean, and there, there's a, there's a cutoff point where like, when we're reviewing the video, because even though we camera all of it, when, when we come into line, there will be another complete pre-TV marking off all the services, seeing which ones are active, which ones have factory caps, and this, that, and the other, and during that, if there's something that we can't line through, you know, it's not gonna be like, oh, well, let's just try and see what happens, because you end up in, getting in trouble when you do stuff like that.
So you guys are gonna run the camera back through before you line?
Yes, well, prior to line, we gotta run the camera, get all of our measurements, and then we also have to pre-clean, pre-clean all of it to get it to where we can't line with roots hanging in, or, you know what I mean, they, it's gotta be a clean pipe prior, prior to us pulling the liner in and expanding out, because you can line with it, but you'll end up, if there's a root ball, you'll end up seeing that little bit of a bubble behind there where the root ball's compressed in between the original host pipe and, and the new liner, so it's just not best practice at all.
So as far as the taps go, every time there's a tap, there won't be any liner in the tap, like if there's roots growing, growing in the tap, then.
Each tap's a big up the tap, then.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no, there's no liner inside the tap, it just pretty much is a hole through your liner after you go through it.
Yes, it, it's just basically a four-inch.
Right.
Robotically cut hole, there's nothing up into the tap.
Right.
But I mean, that's kinda across the board, no matter what lining style you're gonna do, unless you go through and pipe burst it, but when you're pipe bursting, you're gonna have to dig every single one of those up before you can pull it through anyways, so.
How long have you guys been using this stuff?
Um, we've only been using it for probably about six months, but we've been, like, it's been a long process for us, like, getting in, getting into it, me and another one of the project managers, we went to Pennsylvania, and then we also, there's some up in Kansas City being done, we, just to make sure that this is, one, a technology like we can support and gladly put in and tell people we offer, but two, that it's gonna work for us, and we, it's a good workflow for us, you know what I mean, um, we're a little on the conservative side when it comes to, we, we don't like to just jump into stuff, because it, honestly, it's probably been years coming that we should've done something, but we just wanna be sure when we're looking at stuff and installing stuff, that it's gonna be in the ground for years to come without a problem, so. I got, I just have questions right now.
Fifty-year plus service life, I mean, I guess part of me thinks that's a really long time, but part of me doesn't think that's a real long time.
Yeah, that is.
I mean, that's surely an extremely conservative number, isn't it?
That's kind of the, one of the ASTMs for like lining, is they require that you can at least fifty plus, so everybody puts, if, if they meet that, it's fifty plus, I, I don't know anybody that's got, you know, there are some liners that have been in probably since the sixties-ish, but like anything past that, it's not really known.
Right, the technology wasn't available.
Yeah.
Or not.
Yeah, so it's, it's hard to say, you know, in another fifty years, a ton, a ton of these technologies may say a hundred plus, because we now actually have the physical data to say, yeah, this was installed this date, and it's still great.
Right.
So, but I, one of the biggest things for this is, I guess, like, if you guys had a, a new neighborhood going in, or anything like that, I mean, what's the material you guys would be specking for the sewer?
PVC.
PVC, that's, I mean, that's what we're going back in, but you guys are gonna have PVC throughout whatever we're lining.
I don't remember the, the camera pictures, Jason, they're mainly holes in the side of it, or joints where roots were growing in, is that, is that correct?
All right.
Is that mainly our problems are in town?
Well, there's some of them that actually had holes.
Or broke.
Yeah, and broke.
Yeah, but nothing like separated pipe, where there's half of the pipe.
There might've been, you know, am I right when they were saying, I noticed some of were having a little, you know, they were offset.
Yeah, there, there were some, some of them that were, were offset, but nothing past what we would consider you can't line through, because the manufacturer, their, their thing is, is if the offset is more than twenty to twenty-five percent, I mean, you can line through it, and you wouldn't have a problem, you'd still have flow, but they don't really recommend that.
Right.
They, they would recommend an open-cut repair to get it lined up, so, especially if the offset is, your upstream side is down, so you're not building up silt and, you know, solids there, so, but, no, from reviewing the videos, I mean, you guys have a ton of fractures, a lot of stuff at the joints, a lot of roots, and like I said, all of that needs to be, it'll, it'll be cleaned out prior to the lining, and then, once this is in, this is the new pipe, I mean, the host pipe will still give some structure. some structure because obviously it's still standing now, but if the host pipe was to disappear, this is fully structural as far as you could dig it up and take it away and then bury it, bury it again, but this just left and you're good to go.
That cleaning, cameraing and everything, obviously that's included in this hundred fifty figure.
Yeah, yeah, that's all, that, that, that per foot price is us coming out, cleaning, cameraing, installing, cutting everything back. I mean.
What's the, what's your timeframe?
Um, I'd have to get with the manufacturer as far as, because last time I checked, usually the lead, like if I come out and get all my measurements of which runs I want on which reels and this, that and the other, they're like three to four weeks on being able to manufacture, get it on the reels and then hopefully shipping's been crazy for us as far as concrete and this, but hopefully another week, so four to five weeks to get the material and then we probably can come out when we get it.
How you do that when you go in there and line it and shut everybody down on dumping water in the sewer?
Yes, yeah. Basically go through, well, not only shut everybody down, but there are a couple of lines as you get closer to where it leaves down, that there is flow also and that, that number includes bypass as far as us plugging off one of the manholes. So there's no flow while we're doing it, cleaning and bypassing to the next manhole down so that the flow is continued except for the section we're working on. That section, usually we put out door hangers, hopefully like a week to a little over a week before and then usually forty-eight hours to twenty-four hours prior, we try and make another saying, hey, we put out a door flyer, we're going to be lining this pipe, please reduce water usage, especially anything like showers and baths and, you know, washing clothes, anything heavy. I mean, they can use the restroom if need be or wash their hands, but yeah, for probably four to maybe six hours, that, that line, the residents on there need to reduce water use. And then once we're done, we'll go in and cut open all of them to get whatever is there drained out and then plug it off again to do the final cleanup, uh, to, to get them really clean.
Well, the, the service life is fifty or something. Does that mean the warranty or does there a warranty with it?
Um, the typical warranty is a one year for us on, as the installation. I do know that they warranty this material, the material itself from defects for ten years. So, but most, whether we're doing manhole rehab or, uh, internal point repairs or this line, the, kind of the standard is one year.
What, is there any at all, any maintenance that'll be done? I mean, obviously when the guys clean them out, but there's no.
But like as far as because this is in, you guys are going to have to do this additionally? Is that what you're saying? Like additional maintenance because of the lining or after it's in?
Yeah, I mean, it's literally, I mean, it's pretty much PVC. It's just there.
Yeah, you, you, you treat it the same as you would a normal PVC sewer.
Or someone like the nitrate plant where we're spending so much every so often on whatever it is.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, it's the same as normal PVC. Yeah, they, like I said, the easiest way to think about it is it's stick PVC, but rolled up on a coil and then we pull it in and you have one stick, manhole to manhole.
You know, we had another bid from another company and they called it like, uh, what, Instaform or something or what was that? There was another.
In situ form?
Yeah, okay. What, what is that?
Is that, is that, no, in situ form is, um, it's not fiberglass, but it's almost, it, it's, it's a felt liner with a epoxy resin in it. And that's what I was saying that they make each, it's the same as this as far as they make a sock to the length, manhole to manhole, and it will be wet out with resin when they're here. They will wet it out and then they will inflate it through the line and then the equipment we use and they use as far as steaming and stuff like that, it's all pretty much the same. They'll steam it, but theirs is not to soften it and inflate it out. Theirs is to actually cure the epoxy. And then after that, then they'll take a cookie of it and that's where the, that material gets its test from.
So it's probably a thinner product than this?
Um, I mean, anywhere from four to six mils thick is usually what, what they are.
It's more of a, I'm, I'm just saying more of a liner liner than the actual brand new piece of pipe in there.
Yeah. I mean, it's a, their, in situ forms, the, I, I don't want to say the big dog, but they're the original, the, the original liners and then everybody else stemmed from them on the stuff.
Answer a lot of questions today, but. Anybody else have any other questions?
Can I ask you, is there any, any doubt in your mind after seeing the material now?
I love, I love it. Like, I don't like it. It's really neat idea. Huh.
Yeah, it seems, it seems ridiculously simple, actually. Yeah, I mean, it really does. That's not at all what I was expecting.
That's not at all what I was expecting.
And that's, I, I don't want to say I had a light bulb moment, but a couple of years ago when we were like starting to look into this, I, I understood the process, but when we finally went onsite and started watching some installations and we were watching it and then they cut off, because we actually come out of the manhole with the PVC pipe. So there's like a stove pipe to send the steam down and then after it's done, it all gets cut off and cut flush with the manhole walls. And when they cut that piece off, I go, I don't know what I was expecting, but I go, this is like stick PVC pipe. And the, the guy with the manufacturer, he's like, that's what I was telling you the whole time. I'm like, well, I don't know what I was thinking in my mind, but yeah, it's stick PVC pipe.
How do you guys do the payment on it if we went through with it?
What do you mean?
Just how, how much upfront afterwards?
Oh, I, I don't know if you guys worked, worked, worked with us typically, but when we're done, i- i- unless this takes, like if it's a multi-month thing, we'll probably send you a bill month, monthly, but I mean, this should be finished in a month. So if, if it was something longer, you know, that's where we bill monthly.
So in theory, maybe by the end of July or first of August, you would be done?
Yeah.
If we made the decision?
Yeah. Yeah.
The, I mean, the citizens are going to ask us, how, like, how long do you see them having to reduce their water consumption roughly?
Four, four to six hours on any given, like, like I said, we'll, we'll put out door hangers to let them know the date that's coming and then try and make contact with them again. The biggest ones is there's a couple of lines, I don't know how much flow, but there was one behind the lumber, lumber yard and like the bank and the post office. When I went and looked at them, there wasn't a ton of flow, but usually when there's businesses like that, those we try and give a little bit more notice and try and work with them a little more or try and do it towards, towards after hours for them just for the fact of I know like if you're running a business, you can't be like, oh, no, you can't do anything. So those were a couple of mine. And then there were a couple of lines, because this all says eight inch, but when I was going back through, there are a couple of lines when I was looking that are ten. I'd have to look, I can't remember the count, but there's.
Two of them, yeah.
Yeah, ten and then maybe one twelve. So.
Does that make that, that wall thinner at that point?
No, it's, it's a different, if it's, if it's made for eight inch, it's made for eight inch. If it's made for ten, it's made for ten, twelve. And that's, I, we can expand a little bit, but just like normal PVC, if you put a lot of air pressure to it and try and push it past, you'll end up cracking and blowing through. So now it's like the ten will be, come off of the line for the ten inch liner and be put on a, a separate reel. It's not all the same. Yeah.
I need a refresher. This seventy-five, fifty-six feet that we came up with is, remind me how we arrived at that. Do they in on that helping?
Jason and, and them got that, all of that measurement?
Yeah, we just went, we just went through the camera.
These are the worst ones though, right?
Yeah. What was it? I, I named it through one, two and then three and four.
These are the threes and the fours.
Yeah. One or two.
Of everything cameraed.
Yeah, cameras.
Problem.
The one and twos were just hairline cracks mainly. Then I got to the threes and fours where the holes offset that far, uh, major, you know, major holes, just holes and cracks.
So if we do this, Jason, we should be good probably for three to five years to build back up our funds to finish out the, the ones and twos?
I don't, honestly, I don't even know if I'd worry about the one and twos. I would try to get some more of other lines cameraed to see if there's any more.
Threes and fours that we don't know.
Threes and fours. That's, yes.
Section off the town, come up with a plan every five years.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it's caused you to camera or places that you've had to lay it out.
You've had.
Yeah. Issues.
I think the good thing about this one is all the structures, all the structures will be done. So.
That looks, that looks good, I think so. Do you guys have any more questions or, I can't say it. The funds, we're, we're comfortable with that? We already talked about it.
Yeah, I mean, we're good fund wise. Um, I am going to try to do some more checking on that money that's coming in because I, I do, I feel like water and sewer is going to be an option for it, but, I mean, if the work's not done yet, that's, would still be an option.
As far as I'm.
So, I mean, it would be, it's a, it's perfect timing, really. Because we don't, if that's what it needs to be used for, we don't have another project in mind at this point.
You gotta stand on this piece.
No.
I know that, I mean, we got two hundred and thirty-six thousand in the sewer replacement. I mean, that still leaves us eighty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not real cool. You know, that's what it's there for.
Right.
That, that is.
Honestly, I, I have a question.
There is a psychic question where.
What else you got? Yeah. Unless there's any more questions, do we have a motion on the table?
I was making motions as we, uh, hired mayor specialty services to rehabilitate our eight inch sanitary sewer pipe in the amount of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Eight inch, ten inch, twelve inch.
Well, the quote, whatever it is.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much for coming in and answering all the questions.
Make them in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know yet, but there's, there's, there's plenty of them.
There's got to be some.
Like I said, you just chop them apart and throw them away right now.
Yeah, there's got to be something you can do with it.
Why the east side of the building, Jeff?
Yeah, maybe we could put them up between the doors.
Ooh.
Boy, John, that'll take me a while to get back on that one, but I'll get you. Sewer, that was probably cruel. I clipped the door with an outbreak truck the other day and took the whole side of the wall.
Okay, moving on to, unless we've got anything else under Water Department?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in. Your first day.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, unless there's anything else under a Water, um, the Water Department?
Okay, you guys got the, the hydrants done down at the car department?
Yeah, we just, I just need to get, that drilling mud really threw a kink and we had to get, get it out and it just muddied up everything. And I just didn't want to scatter everywhere, so I just left it until it's going to dry and then we can get it out.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to Street Park Department. What you got, Jason?
Well, not much on there, guys. It's like I said, I am still waiting to, to get warmed up. I could start milling those streets now, but those teeth are eight hundred dollars a piece just for that little drum. So I, I, I don't want to be spending left and right of eight hundred dollars just because it's still cold.
The chat's all here.
So, but, yeah, the chat's still here.
Chat's all here.
So, the chat's here, ready to go and, uh, and we're just looking at, just giving things warmed up on that. And so as far as the mowing, it looks like everything's going good, I guess.
It is.
Okay.
I got you.
She's kind of the mower lady there, so. And then, guys, I hate to sit there and say, well, work equipment's down. Uh, we went to go grade yesterday. Alan was going to practice some more and there's lights blinking all over the thing because the brakes have lost power on the grader. So he was worried about it. He called me. I said, just bring it back and let's figure out what, so he got the book out. He started calling some people and I think he, uh, who'd he call? Berry, Berry Tractor. I told him to call Berry Tractor and so he's going to come out and look at it, but I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal. That's kind of what Alan said. So we're going to stick with what he says and hope to get us a good fix.
A hundred and seventy-three dollars for the part.
If that was the problem, but I, he said, can I call him to come out? And I said, yes, because I don't want this little thing of us trying to do it and that's not it. And next thing you know, we got four grand in it. When, when we should have just called him and had eleven hundred. So. I'm just letting you know about the grader. That's why I, the streets aren't, that's why we haven't gone to the grader yet. So. Other than that, that's about all I have right now on the streets is still trying to do the pothole thing and stuff until it gets warmer.
Anybody have any questions, comments or concerns for Jason? Jason, um, it's been brought to, uh, my attention that the, um, the alleyway between the bus parking, the school bus parking over here and Stymage Poverty, that little alleyway, there's some holes there. Uh, if somebody could go over there and, uh, fill those in and also behind the library, uh, that alleyway right there is starting to get kind of holy over there.
We usually drag that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get those.
Yeah, when you have time.
On there. We were going to do it today, but, uh, Dave was off today and so I was out helping him. I was going to start dragging some out.
Okay.
Well, they mowed with a tractor or something. Boy, it wasn't a bad boy.
Thank you very much on that.
Oh, yeah.
And unless anybody's got anything else for Jason regarding the streets and parks, move on to Police Department. Chief Adams?
Um, not a whole lot. We've been keeping, keeping busy. We've had kind of a rash of, uh, dog bites uh, in town. So we have been housing, uh, some dogs for lengthy periods of time. Um, usually a minimum of ten days for each one. I think we were up to three here this last month. Um, we did get the shed finished up or, um, Jesse's Construction got the fed, uh, shed finished up down there at the, uh, pound. So we just got to get stuff moved over and then that way we can, we can be done, um, in that little shed, which we get dinged on every year from the state, uh, because our, there's no door or anything. So it's nice that that shed's finally done and we're finished up with it. Um, we already be one officer down, uh, at the end of this week for a month with one going on military leave. Um, so we're, we're adjusting schedule and getting ready for that in Jubilee. Um, collector tickets coming up. We start that May twenty-first to the thirty-first. Um, we do receive pretty good funds. We bought a lot of equipment last year free of charge, um, just for watching people wearing seatbelts. So, uh, we will be out working that again. I think last year we ended up total was fifteen hundred dollars from the state that we got free of charge, uh, to buy roller tapes, uh, and equipment and different things that we needed. So it's going pretty good. Um, other than that, really, that's pretty much, uh, what I got for this and then we'll discuss more later.
Do we have any questions, comments or concerns for the chief? Okay, moving on to Fire Department. Do we have anything from Chief Sanders? Moving on to City Administrator, Jamie?
I would like permission for Mark to sign our new contract with CIC, our computer software. Uh, the invoice is for three thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, um, which is actually down, uh, three thousand one seventy.
Thirty thousand.
I mean.
Can't deal with that then.
Yeah. And it actually, so they, gosh, how long were people down? They just got hacked and Stafford was down for what, a week? Yeah. So we actually house our own server and, um, if you didn't have your own server, you couldn't do anything, but Pam and I can still work because of the way we have it set up. So, uh, that was, that's more than, you know, we could still get our work done and it, it worked out well and it sounds like they got their stuff worked out. So.
What'd they get?
I, I don't even know. Like, we couldn't even go to their website. They had everything completely shut down. We've had to work out a few kinks, um, like with our meters and stuff, but everything's been good. So I just need permission for that.
I think a little bit on that. I should, or Mark to sign the CIC agreement for three thousand one hundred and seventy over.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Also, I got, um, a letter and pictures from the Health Department regarding three twelve was second. I think some of you have seen. I think some of you have seen it, seen it, um, it's in pretty bad condition, I know John will talk a little bit more about the process, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if I've got a ton to add, the, uh, there were three, four children, how many children?
Four.
Four kids were removed from the house, it's been clackers, she told them that they had to stay out till further notice from her.
They're living, they were living in there?
Actually, yeah, I believe it was five.
Yeah.
There was five.
Five, yeah, sorry, I was wrong on that.
Five children.
This, these individuals have been in municipal court, they had a dog that neighbor had let their dog out at like five or six o'clock in the morning and she'd gone to check on it, and this dog had picked it up by the neck and killed it. The dog ran into the house and then died on the way to the, um, so we have dealt with these individuals before. I guess my thought is, and my concern is, I'm not sure we're, we're gonna draw the line on city stuff versus, um, county stuff. If, if there's a child in need of care case open, um, I would think and hope the social workers will, um, assist this family in getting their house cleaned up, uh, so they can get the kids back. I, your ordinances allow you to prosecute cases, uh, for minimum housing standards, um, but I, I think that's probably being violated at this point anyways because Dustin drove by the house this evening and it looks like they're back in it.
I don't think they.
They haven't been out.
They haven't been out.
Just the kids were removed there.
So, I guess I'm confused even on the process, like, if he tells them not to be in there, is it?
Normally, we had done this process where they write the report and then we ask them to appear before counsel or a prosecutor in municipal court, but I just kinda spin my wheels because, A, they never have the money to do anything to clean up the house anyways, so they suffer fines and consequences through municipal court and then nothing ever happens. I mean, you just can't squeeze blood out of the turnip. Um, so my thought is, losing children would be incentive enough.
And they ha, I mean, they have been, like, I, they have a dumpster and they have been getting that dumped as often, but.
This sounds like to me it's more a Health Department issue.
It, it is, but you're, it's kind of overlapping in that your health person's also the health person in the city and she's brought it here. I don't know what, if any steps she's done there, but, but my thought is, I think we just kinda sit on it for right now.
And we did when I was on scene, I did call the county health nurse and, uh, had her come out and go through the house cause we were legally there at that time, so I could have her come in and look, it wasn't like we were breaking contact coming back. So, I call them on any of those to have her come in, so Lisa's documented, and if she can do something about it, if, if she can get with them and, and either condemn a house or say that it's okay, whatever. Um, we try to knock that out at each one that we go to when we run into a condition like that, so we don't have to try and, and go back later and do it, I just try to knock it all out at that one shot.
And Kelly, having been involved in those types of cases in the past, not for probably the last seven or eight years, but you're just causing an added stressor and it's just gonna take longer for them to do anything. I, I think you just let them work through the, the system that they're in now and, and if we need to, we can, but, um.
Sounds like they try to press the issue if they can't get anywhere then.
I just, I don't, and, and she, Jamie reminded me about it before the meeting, I, I just kinda wanna avoid extending city resources on it.
Does she really didn't ask anything about, she's just making us aware?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what, I guess, I'm totally confused, she just wants us in the, in the loop.
Normally, she gets involved, she notifies them, she tries to work something out with them, okay, with the, with the landowners. And here, a deed wasn't filed, so the landowners are not actually the person of record as far as the owner of the house. They can then appeal to the governing body, you guys, uh, and that's not been done. So, they, but they're violating her order to stay out of the house, so if you wanted to, we could commence a formal process and have them come in. I'm advising, let's not, let's just let them deal with their stuff in the district court. And if we need to in the future, then, then we can, so. It's brought to your attention now, my suggestion is we just allow the processes already in place to happen.
And the kids are out of the house?
I mean, I haven't been following the case, but that's my understanding, without, and I'm trying to avoid causing them further problems by the fact that we're in a public forum, but that's my understanding.
Yes, there, I have seen them at the other residence, um, I mean, I'm sure they're going back, I don't know for sure, I'm not gonna say positive. I have seen them over at the other residence that the courts have said that that's where they're to be. And I drove by there today and I, I seen the kids in the backyard, um, so, I mean, they are over there, I don't know that they're back at the house, so.
I'm up here with John's recommendation.
Yeah, I think you can just follow what, uh, John is suggesting to do, let's just leave, let, uh, Kelly deal with it at the moment. We are made aware of it, so we know what's going on.
There's just other issues going on there that.
Yeah.
They're just the condition of the house.
Wow.
And, oh, we still on you, I'm sorry, I need to meet you.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Jamie?
Um, Jubilee's next weekend, guys. There you go. Where's the movie?
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns, Jamie?
Uh, don't we need to pass the C and B?
Uh, I have that under new business, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't let me forget that.
Oh, you have a new administrative report.
That's what I was reading.
All right. Okay, unless anybody's got any, uh, questions, uh, more questions for Jamie, we'll move on to City Attorney and John.
Um, as Alan brought up, we've had a number of dog bites, uh, we do have a hearing set for Thursday, though it sounded when the owner of the dog was in that they're trying to remove that dog from town, but in preparation for that hearing, I did have an emergency come up, uh, that I found out about this afternoon. Um, I don't want that to slip through the cracks, so I'm gonna ask that counsel appoint my, uh, partner who does handle other municipal type issues elsewhere. To serve as, uh, just a, an interim city, uh, Assistant City Attorney to prosecute that one case. Might just get a mo, a motion to approve Joshua Nicolay.
What was his name again?
Nicolay, N-I-C-O-L-A-Y.
Joshua?
Joshua, Josh.
As temporary city interim?
Temporary interim assistant, I'm not asking you to appoint a permanent Assistant City Attorney, just somebody to fill in for that one case.
Make a motion to appoint Joshua Nicolay as interim assistant for.
Temporary, temporarily.
Sorry, I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Appreciate it.
Anybody have any other questions, comments, or concerns for John? Okay, moving on to old business, okay, anything for the ordinance, ten, ten seventy-one dash twenty house? Ten eighty-two dash twenty-one.
Gave it all to Alan.
What's that? Uh, I was thinking of a case that I need to talk to him about.
The, the house numbers?
Yeah, we're, we're, we have kinda slack, we haven't been, um, we've gotta get out there with everything that's been going on. Um, we've been kinda, kinda getting it handed to us and busy, um, but yeah, we're, we're getting on that and, and watching those, so. And it has gotten better, uh, we just gotta see what the difference is now, the ones that we did before that were mailbox to not, that not, now under the new resolution, that not being, uh, acceptable, so now we're, you know, there was a few that I marked that they'd had, so we've gotta go back and look at those.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions regarding the house, the house numbers? Okay, swimming pool.
It's gonna be filled Friday.
So, we're gonna take it off, please remove it.
Um, if you would like to remove it, I would love that, I did put, I got a new whiteboard, everyone wants to check it out. Um, I have pool repairs up there, uh, just as a reminder after the season that that, I, I'm gonna continually talk to Chris over the summer and we're gonna get pool repairs scheduled as soon as we.
Since they wanna do it fall, like after it's screened.
I'm hoping so.
They felt like they had a pretty good handle on it, but they did.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Take it off.
Yeah. All right, anything else, uh, under the sewer report? Nothing? Okay. Okay, property code violations.
I left four oh one east fourth on there out of excitement. Okay, so, I attempted to, uh, go see a few properties today, um. Six forty-seven and six fifty-one are full of stuff, um, this, six forty-seven bite layers. That one looks like more packed, we couldn't get into the structure, but it, it, I mean, it looks like things were boxed up and just, so, I mean, the garage is still full. The yellow house on the corner, I would not go much further than the door, Mar, I called Marshall out cause I was too scared. Um, I mean, there's just gigantic holes and it was raining inside the house, it's disgusting, so I.
It's full of clothes, furniture, beds.
Um, and then eight oh eight North Broadway, I walked up to the door and opened it and I'm not going any further.
And which one had holes in the floor?
Uh, East Fifth, six fifty-one East Fifth.
Probably that one, but you can't see them.
Yeah, yeah.
They're filled.
So, I mean.
If you can't, you don't, nobody can get there to clean the stuff out, I mean.
And that's my concern, I don't know what to do to even move forward with cleaning it out.
If it's not even safe for a human to get in there to just take pictures of the holes and let's move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we gotta, if we're gonna tear them down, that stuff can't go to the landfill unless, and this would be a question for Chad, he might be able to put it all in his roll-off dumpsters and haul it all to Barton County. Cause Barton County and our landfill are two totally different landfills.
Right.
They have a line pit, we don't, so they can take some of that stuff.
Okay.
So, it may cost more to have it hauled there, but I don't know, I can tell you one thing, I've cleaned out one house and Ryan helped me along with some other people and it was bad, it was horrible.
I mean, if the elements have gotten to this stuff, then it's really.
I mean, I don't, I don't know anyone that would care about the pay, to get the pay to clean these houses up. Like, I mean, it's just horrible.
I can't believe you don't want that to do.
Yeah, I can't believe you guys did that either.
That's what I love to.
It was, it was okay till we.
Opened the freezer?
Well, we breathed in whatever that nasty stuff was in that house. I don't think the one on six fifty-one East Fifth is safe to have people in there trying to clean it out. I mean, the floor is literally rotted out of it in places, I mean, it's, you're, you're looking at the dirt and the insulation and stuff that's fallen down on there.
And North Broadway has to be, I mean, it's open, there's holes.
When you remove this stuff, can you, can you physically see the personal property that's inside of it? I mean, are they gonna be able to tell when you're throwing it away that?
They, they claim, yes, uh, the county landfill, yeah, they, they've complained if you start. Yeah, that's when we have, so, yeah, that's good.
But it, that, that stuff's probably safer than some of the building products, asbestos and that kinda other stuff that could be in there.
Do we can't take that out there, you can't, you can't take coffee and paint cans, anything like that out there? Well, you paint cans can, but.
That's why Barton County is different, I think Barton County and Reno County are different, cause they've got, you know, instead of sending somebody in a house to clean it out, them people are just gonna be out of luck with whatever they left in there.
Okay, any more discussion?
What do you have to tear off of it?
You have to have it inspected, you have to have it inspected.
Um, can I request some tree work to be done?
You do?
With that, you need to.
Okay, unless there's anything else that we'd like to discuss, uh, regarding the property code violations, move on to, uh.
Real quick, did you figure out what it costs to tear down the house?
Fourth Street?
Yes.
I have not.
Looks good, though.
It looks wonderful.
Yeah, it does. I didn't know Chad ever had an idea of what it costs us.
I mean, he hasn't sent anything.
Where, so you guys raised the sewer line up, where's that sewer line go?
East?
Underneath Anna's house.
The main runs under the garage, running north and south.
I know, but I didn't know if it goes.
Yeah, it does. Clay tile, yes, it is.
Might be interesting if anybody wanted to do something.
Yeah, but there's no way to get anywhere else, see, cause they both.
Yes, gas company was informed back.
And that one, both, they both run north and south.
Or at the end of twenty twenty and told them that we would be working on these at the beginning of twenty twenty-one, so.
So, do we need to double-check the gas company and make sure they've done their part?
I can double-check them.
Cause I mean, we don't need to be going in tearing down houses and then have to call them back in to fix the issue.
I saw them around, yeah, yeah, and they didn't do all of them, I don't know, but, yeah.
Or maybe we just need to look and make, because typically, I think, on the ones we tore down on Second Street, they come in and pull drivers and everything out.
Yeah, and that's what they'll do.
Well, maybe I can call Kurt and just ask him if he'll double-check them for me.
Yeah.
Cause if not, I mean, it could take them a month to get out here and get that stuff done.
Okay, anything else?
So, we're gonna get a bid then on hauling them all.
Yeah, I'll talk to Chad and just see if that's even an option.
And get us, get us our total in there.
Fourth Street.
So, we know what we're up against on these others.
So, what about, um, the houses on First Street, like, as far as, is there a bunch of stuff in those?
No, we're.
Everything that, if I remember right, the North House, everything in it can go right out here.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's construction material, yeah, there's no trash really per se in that, there's metal that.
So, we're looking at three part properties for sure that need to be.
Yeah, the two on, on East Fifth. Well, the bottom three.
Yeah, right. It's really one twelve, got some stuff in it, but.
One twelve stuff.
We haven't really moved forward on that one, that's the one that does have stuff in it and it's been, I mean, it's not open like these other ones.
South and rural.
Who's on anyone?
Love two.
Oh.
I mean, we have a. We have a.
I think he may have passed away.
No.
No.
What was the letter I sent you?
That was Tririana.
Oh, gosh.
I got rid of him, remember, oh, I shouldn't say that, I'm sorry.
Okay, perhaps we should move on. Okay, let's talk about the, uh, truck parking, got anything on that?
Um, I met with E V H yesterday and he's gonna write up what he, what he knows and get it sent over for us. Um, he mentioned wanting to drain it to the west, just the way that everything, um, lined out and I told him I didn't think that anything flowed that way and he said, well, where does the, the highway drain? I said, it sits there, so, but I think Ross had told me it does kinda drain to the south a little bit, so. He's gonna get us what we need and then I'm kind of hoping we can give that to Phil and see if they'd be interested in a day's work out there and, or however many.
Could be a lot more if they wanna make water go to the west.
Well, he said.
Cause you're gonna make it go west and south.
Yeah, he said that you get that, you can cut. Yeah, he said that you did that, you can cut it and take it to the, the highway. It wouldn't be a problem, so. He talked like it shouldn't be too big of a deal.
Okay. Moving on to media for nitrate facility.
So Jason and I were talking about this. Do you guys care if we take this off? He has the nitrate plant running good and the water.
I'm thinking the water tables up because the nitrates are so low. It's way low. That has not re-ginned in probably four months. It's just that low, guys. So I, I told her, I said, take it off. We'll worry about it when that time comes. But it's incredibly low. I've never seen it this low.
Whiteboard and take it off. That's fine. Just so it's a back-up reminder.
All right. So we've got any updates on the engine for a power plant?
Nope.
Nothing? Okay. And finally, bulk water.
I mean, they kind of went over well too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business, C and B license for Jubilee.
Can I please have a beer garden?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve, Jamie, for a C and B license for the Jubilee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
I have, I have a question on Jubilee just while we're here. Right, when are those coming? When are we gonna have to block the street? I just hadn't heard, so I was just curious.
They usually come on Thursday afternoon. Yeah.
Okay, I just, hey, it's still just.
We usually just drop barricades there and just do that one block, yeah, for quite a while.
I'll send an email to the county because they kinda get grumpy about it.
In fact, my lung, man.
They're gonna have to move their.
Actually, I'm okay. They actually use it while they're here. No, they actually do.
Yeah, that's right.
They do. Every year, they use it, block off at the intersection at the courthouse, so do that half a block.
Yeah, I'll probably have the guys block everything off Thursday morning just to have it done.
Usually just drop them and wait on him and close it out when he gets pulled in.
Okay, moving on to executive sessions. We have a ten-minute executive session on elected personnel regarding the pool.
I thought that was five.
Yeah, ten minutes seems a little excessive.
Five, let's do five.
You wanna do five?
I just have the information.
You originally said ten, so if it's five, that's fine with me.
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor? Motion carries. We will resume at eight seventeen. Call this meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to hire Stephanie Smith as the manager at six thousand dollars for the season. Allison Smith is the assistant manager at ten dollars and fifty cents an hour. Hunter Smith, Peyton Meyer and Adrian Adami at eight fifty an hour. And the new hires Jade Portillo, Mackenzie Hacker and Paige Mansel at eight twenty-five an hour.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, we have a ten-minute executive session under the Police Department for non-elected personnel, attorney-client privilege.
So move.
No motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. We'll resume at eight twenty-eight. Call this meeting back to order.
You can email that.
It's just the budget worksheets.
Are they done? All of them? I'll just email them to.
And then you guys can just pick which ones you want?
Yes.
Okay, deal.
Okay, having no more business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Meeting adjourned.